Everybody wants to stand for the House of Representatives?
The House of Representatives, two of the five of the United States of America, and two of the Republicans who stand. One nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call me, Moller.
Hey, Mayor Wester.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Eric.
Tom.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Public forum. Do you want to speak about the building?
Yes, I did actually.
Well, let you do that very forum, by the way.
Okay. Um, I was just caught coming up to find out if we could have a thirty day extension before any decisions are made about our property over on Vine Street. We are literally, he's over there working on it right now. We have about less than thirty days. I'm asking for thirty days for weather related, if anything were to pop up.
You can do that, um, in front of the bait shop. Is there any way we can get the cigarette butts and...
Yes, I, yeah. I seen them, it was bad today. I will do that right away in the morning.
Cause they kind of don't park very good though.
Yeah, no, it doesn't look good there at all, so. And I'm gonna figure out something for people to put cigarette butts into.
Good luck getting them ready to do it.
Yeah. I'm gonna try anyway, otherwise I'll just keep sweeping them off.
You got, you think in thirty days you can make something happen?
Yes, I do.
Now, when, when we had talked, you said, yeah, at, at June thirty, the exterior of the building would be done.
Yes, the exterior will be done completely. Tightened up, weatherproof.
You al, you also said if the exterior isn't done, we, uh, the city could bulldoze it down.
Yes. Cause we're about to that point ourselves.
So, when, when was the last time we, um, addressed this?
I'd, I'd tell you it was eighteen months ago maybe, at least.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've had eighteen months to get it done for the last time. We did your thirty days or whatever. And how long does this case take in the system?
I think it's two months worth of time.
Okay, so, I mean, if it, if it gets done, then we can stop the process.
Okay, sounds good to me, yeah.
That's fair enough.
Yeah, that sounds good to me, yeah.
Okay.
That works.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Can I go ahead and...
You can move.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
We don't have to stay until the end.
Oh, okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Everybody else is on the agenda. Okay, can send and tend, any additions or corrections?
No.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, go ahead. Moller.
Yes.
Walton. Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
So, we got building permits?
Yes, they are all approved. They're all approved and ready.
So, I only have one question here. So, the one on, on South State Road is a metal shed, but the picture shows that it's not like corrugated and so it's fine. Is that the way the sheds go along?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and that's the one on North State Road. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's in the trailer park actually.
Okay.
But, yeah, so we've gone back and forth with, with them a few times on this, cause they initially proposed a regular metal corrugated shed, which was not permissible. So, they, uh, it, this is a metal shed, but it is a, it looks like blackwood siding.
Um, with these, um, you know, the ordinances and the building and that, and when they come, whether it be for a shed or, or whatever in addition, um, I wonder if we shouldn't have something written for the, for the customer, um, that you hand them, besides just telling them what it is?
We...
Just, do you give them a printed copy?
We, we give them a packet.
Every time?
Of, yeah, of the app, well, okay, unless they get the application online, which they can. They can just get the building permit application online. Okay, but if they come into, in to see me, the packet includes the application checklist and then the regulations for the district and the general regulations that apply to everybody.
Well, for instance, with the, with the cement issues, you know, where they don't need a building permit necessarily.
Right, yeah.
I wonder if, do they get something written?
They do, they get, they get the concrete permit and on the back of the permit, the reg, are the concrete regulations.
Okay, alright, thank you.
A motion to approve the building permit applications.
So, move.
Second?
I'll second.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, we have an amendment to a building permit, for Jimmy and Vinnie. Anybody have any questions?
I guess just, just, uh, know that the amendment to the permit extends to the north end ten more feet and that's it. You know, so there's an allocation between the house and the, and the shed about this ten feet, but the footprint's the same, other than the north end is extended, uh, ten feet.
So, the footprint's the same with, and I saw where it says all the setbacks were being met.
Yeah.
Cause you had it surveyed, right? And that's when you found out where your east end is?
We didn't have it surveyed, but we found pins and stuff, so, yeah.
Okay, so you're kind of back?
Yeah, we're back.
Back?
We're supposed to be what, four foot? I think we're five foot, something like that.
Four foot.
On the, on the side, yeah.
Have it, exactly.
Four foot to the overhead, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, four foot to the overhead, at least, if not more.
So, did Eric sign off on this again, or...
This one was actually issued in January originally and it was just me and the mayor at the time, so.
Okay, alright.
Do you have a motion to approve that amendment? So, second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Terry.
I'll second.
Moller.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Let's talk a little bit, though, here. Let's look to the next page in your packet. There's an interesting discussion about sanitary sewer service. What I really want to show you is, let's look to page nine. And can you, can you make heads or tails of it? Down at the bottom, or at the bottom of the picture is the water plant. And this shows, um, the, the backwash tank, I've highlighted that in orange. And then, so water from the water plant rushes through those, the tanks for backwash and then it goes into this underground storage tank, okay, where it stays there until it's pumped out into this, into the sanitary sewer through the orange line. Okay? So, um, that line there, the orange line, has been dedicated to the, um, to the water plant, just for this, for this backflow, uh, water. So, uh, the best and the easiest connection for stocks as they, as they get into this, the easiest connection for them is to allow them to connect into that orange, into that orange line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I have some concerns about that, about having sewer go into the line that exclusively serves our water plant. Now, um, we ran that, that past the engineer and that's the report a couple pages before.
Well, that's a typical engineer report.
Well, it says two things. It, it says, first thing it says it's legal, you can do that, uh, and the second thing is, talks about the capacity and sizing of that line. When those pumps kick in, the, the capacity of the pumps is gonna be the same as the capacity of the line.
But Schmitke's already pumped into that?
Schmitke's truck said, first truck shed has pumped into that, yes.
So, he's putting sewer and water in the other one too?
What'd they do there, Bill? They're sewer and water in that Schmitke's second one, yeah?
No.
No.
So, they have no plans to put in the second one at all? So, what other alternatives do we have for stocks?
If you see up on Fourth Street, they, you may go, go clear to Fourth Street and tie into a city sewer main. Or down at the, at the bottom right, hand corner of the picture, there, there is a sewer main down there, um, in Third Street somewhere. I'm not exactly sure where, how far west it goes, but it serves a lot of tons.
So, one of the concerns would be that it could back up into stocks?
Yeah, I, I was, I was concerned about having sewage have anything to do with, with the water plant and the engineer's not, uh, too concerned about that at all. And then it becomes a, a pipe sizing issue, um, about whether there's potential for any backflow. But the fact of the matter is, it's, uh, one house of residential sewer, you know, it's, it's not that much use.
Where does the rest of them go on that street then? To the...
To the one on Fourth Street.
East, or what?
Well, who's...
By north?
Who's the other ones?
Well, it'd be, I guess, when you're talking about the one on the corner.
Yeah, Raines, there, there's a, there's main on...
Fourth Street or Fifth Street.
So, how big is the main on Fourth Street?
I don't, I don't know. It's, uh, I don't know.
Do you know how, Bill? Do you know what it is?
It's gotta be six or eight.
I was gonna say, it must be bigger.
Yeah, I'd say it's gotta be at least eight.
Looking to listen off to Jones' pre-.
Well, of course, that's it. That, that all lies with the homeowner too, as far as that goes.
How, how much does that, uh, how long does that take to pump that out and how often does it do that? Or does it continually do that?
It's built just like a lift station. There's floats in there and when it reaches the height, then it sends it, send it down the line.
Do we have any idea how much or how often?
It would be quite often because it's backwashing the nitrates every hundred fifty thousand Then every Friday we backwash the iron filters.
We just wouldn't want it to back up into your house. You know?
I mean, that'd be a risk that you would have to, you know. Is there a way to put a check valve, check valve in there, or? I don't know.
They do it.
You, you can have one in your line. Yeah, and that's, if, if the council would agree to this concept, that's actually be a suggestion of mine is that basically we, we may give easement for them to tie into that, but as part of that easement, it would be a, a no liability on the city's part.
Schmitke doesn't have any trucks?
No.
But this is a little closer.
He's going a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
And nobody lives in that building, right?
Well, and he's probably doing it when he comes home on the weekends with the trucks.
And, you know, because of the recent things, I've always thought maybe we should do whatever, opposite of whatever the engineers say. In this case.
I'm starting to reel off of you there.
Well, I do, you know.
But I, I don't see a problem with it myself and then it'd be...
But this, this needs to be discussed, though. We eliminate the gray area if you're, if you're fine with it, I don't see there's an issue, but...
And this city doesn't hold any liability?
We don't hold any liability, then that's not a problem. Check valves are quite expensive. I mean, it's worth it, but I know the kids had a problem there and all, like, they're very expensive.
They have to put what in?
A check valve.
But when you're digging it in, that'd be the time to do it.
Oh, sure.
How expensive?
Um, well, they had sewage in their house about three out of five years, so, so they finally did. I'd say three thousand.
So, it just notifies them that it's backing?
No, it backs, it shuts it off.
Shuts it off so it can't go back up.
It'd be good as an easement that's relinquishing the city from liability?
Do you wanna think about this?
Well, either that or you can dig the other way.
We can spend three thousand digging the, or more, digging the street up, or...
Well, then you could put a check valve, yeah. Yeah, might need a check valve there too.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a good problem. Schmitke is it? Uphill too. I think I'm fine with it.
We got a little time to think of that and start construction, right?
Yeah, I haven't started plumbing, but I'm hoping to do some dirt work this weekend,
Will Gunner like that?
No. No.
The motorbike cross, the motorcross is gone.
There's one thing our town needs, a bike track.
Well, you can build one. They had one down at the car wash there for quite a while, you know? Piece of this.
Well, we'll work on that when we get closer, Jose.
Okay, I'll check with the plumber and see what he thinks.
Very good. Okay, resolution twenty thirty-five, that's pending zoning variance.
Yeah.
Eshore Drive.
Yeah, so Lynn and Lisa Kapsar proposed to build a, a garage at this property, it's four twenty-one Eshore Drive. This is first place south of Jeff Ryan's house. And the variance is to allow the construction of this garage that has a one-foot backyard where a ten-foot backyard is required. And, uh, just as it was, was presented to the Board of Adjustment, the main argument that, that prevailed, I think, was, uh, was the notion that the backyard neighbors is a cornfield. You know, it's, it's ag land there out the back. So, um, this, the Board of Adjustment has passed this variance, did pass on a, on a three to two vote, but they passed the variance and, um, the council can choose to approve that resolution or remand it back to the board.
Well, if it's only a foot and need ten foot, why are we doing this? I mean...
To allow them to do that. You wanna explain your project a little bit there, Lynn?
Yeah, I wanna, um, I'm all built, I wanted a thirty-six foot deep garage and, uh, that would only give me like, I probably can only go twenty-four, cause where my lane comes back to the back, I wanna be able to get my pontoon in there, so I gotta set my garage back a little bit so I can make the corner, so I can get my pontoon in there and then plus my truck and, uh, and my other equipment I got at home. I got, you know, toys I like to put in here too, but, but, uh, and I know on Ryan's side, he's got a real nice tree there and I think I'm gonna have to move to the, I call it the west, but a little bit, because his tree's off the four foot where I'm at. I don't want to destroy his tree, so I'm gonna have to give, you know, I'm gonna have to give myself room there too. But I need, I got a thirty-six foot garage at home and I think I'm gonna only be able to go thirty-four to get where I need to be, so, uh, I might have to cut myself a little short, but I can still get the pontoon in there.
I just have, you know, I just, we do some of this stuff and then...
Butts up a cornfield.
Well, I went, I, yeah, I went to the variance board and I think the, there, even though it wasn't three, two split, the reason that they allowed it at all was because it butts up against cornfields, which is, is out of city limits. So, it butts up against... And, and the owner of that property doesn't have a problem?
And, uh, yeah, Neil Ziegman don't have no problem with it, uh, what I'm doing, um,
You have a motion on twenty thirty-five?
I'd like that motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Hey, Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I, may I motion to approve the building permit?
I'll make that motion also.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That, that is virtually it.
Thank you.
That, that's it. I'll, I'll, we'll record the, the variance and whatnot.
Very good.
Your building permit fee is actually a hundred dollars instead of fifty bucks, so I need an extra fifty dollars from this.
Okay.
That's just because we won't, yes. We spent, we spent that extra.
We didn't tell you that before.
That's for everyone.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I saw you were doing so much this weekend, though.
I have been doing work, yeah.
Okay, ordinance five-ten, we've had some issues with people parking too long on the streets, so we thought we would bring this to the council.
I'd say maybe every year or so. And the issue would come up, people come ask questions about a vehicle that has been parked on the street for an extended period of time. And oftentimes, it's not days, but it's weeks. And, um, as we were addressing another one of those questions this year and really getting into it, find out that we, we don't have, we have not codified anything that, that is a time limitation about parking on the streets. And there is no state code about a time limitation about parking on the street. But it certainly is well within the city's rights to establish a time limit if you would like. I asked our codification company for some language on what that would look like and that's the proposed language for a seventy-two hour, uh, parking limitation. Certainly allows folks to, uh, to park for an extended weekend. But then, it's really what it allows is there, is for the police department to have a, a tool in, in the rulebook about addressing these concerns about really long-term parking.
It would be enforceable.
Is it enforceable?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Will it be, I mean, will they enforce it? That's what I'm saying. Well, actually, they've kind of enforced it before and apparently didn't have an ordinance.
No.
They've, certainly have asked people to, to move stuff, they've, they have, so...
So, it actually say they gotta move the, the vehicle? Does that mean they drive around the block and park it in a different spot?
Yeah, it's, it does say that it has to move, um, and that's it.
And then they bring it back like after a time frame?
Yeah, it's the, the idea about, yeah, you just lurch it a quarter turn forward to make the wheels every time.
I think there was a previous case where there was a ticket issue. You don't think so?
May have happened.
Might have been a few years ago. Might have been prior.
Well, let's get it on the books, ladies and gentlemen.
Right.
Something to start with. Do you have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
I'll make it. I'll second it.
Moller.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
I would suggest just a first reading on this, some people may take interest in it.
I think that's great.
Okay, we're gonna talk about Jess's sidewalk.
Is he there?
Jess, you wanna let us know what you've done on the sidewalk project?
Um, I had Cory Weber come up and he gave me an estimate and you should have a drawing of what, um, he come up with.
Well, that is, yeah, page seventeen A and B. Page seventeen.
So, what he was talking about is taking the sidewalk all the way out up to the, up to my building and then making it a gradual grade down. We would probably have a higher curve than I have now, so you would stay in your corridor, but at least people wouldn't fall anymore. I've had two fall in one year.
But then you have to make a step there, or what?
No, it would just be, I had a bigger curb before, where when you opened up your door, possibly if you had like a really low car, you would hit your door on the curb, but it would, if, the taller the car, you wouldn't hit it. I had a bigger curb before we, uh, got it torn out when we, when they redid the street.
So, Jess, you're not going from the corner, really, you're going from the south side of your building, from the south?
The corner of the, I have that big garage door in the front. From that corner there, all the way to the back end of the building is what I wanna tear out. You can leave from that corner of the building to the stop sign in, cause I don't, that, that doesn't affect my business or not a lot of people walk on that. It is kind of steep there, but I mainly vehicles drive on that, so not a lot of people walk. I'm more worried about people walking.
Does he have a timeframe for what it's gonna take to get this done?
Um, he didn't give me a timeframe, ooh. Sorry. 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 Uh, he, he didn't give me a timeframe. I'm gonna go to a different ordinance to get that. He didn't give me a timeframe yet, so it's whenever I get a, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a question, but...
It's our cost when you develop a project.
Right. We, you know, we sure can.
I think we need to look at it ourselves closer. I'm, I'm not against doing this, Jess. I know that, that, you know, that whole street project where they lowered the street caused a terrific problem. I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna pay for this, we're gonna do it right and that we know what we're doing. Were you, Jess, were you electing to share any of the cost of this?
Well, I prefer not to share the cost of this because I'm not the one that lowered the street.
I know, I know.
What about moving?
And I'm already being sued, so I don't think, you know, I should have to.
But if we're paying the cost, we should probably get another bed.
We should probably, have...
Jess, can you get another bed from somebody?
That's fine.
Well, we'd have to.
I think we need, we all have it.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
We'll get a bed, Jess.
Okay, that's fine. I, I just, it needs done, cause I mean, I'm tired of people falling.
The only thing we're gonna replace is the yellow line?
That's the, the yellow line is where the curve of the sidewalk is, all the way up to my building is what he proposed.
Right, that's what we talked about when I was down there.
Correct, and he also put on there on that bed, cause you talked about the alley?
Yes.
That's also on that.
Right.
So, he's actually gonna level it up with the, where, cause her, at the door it slopes, so it's gonna come level to the level part and then they're just gonna build a curb all along there?
No, from...
No, he's gonna do a gradual slope, so it's not as big of a slope.
It's a constant slope from the door.
With just a little bit of hair down, right?
When that comes out and then goes down a little bit.
But it's not gonna slope to the street?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It, it would slope to the street. It'd be a constant slope that's less, that's less of a grade now than, than what the steep part is.
I think we need to look at it.
We'll do, we'll, uh, we'll work on that too, but making sure that we're cool with the plan and get another price.
Maybe the crew at the library would give us a bit.
Who knows?
Oh, but I understand her wanting to move on it.
Guess we're gonna try and get another approach on it and then we'll, we're gonna work on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we're gonna do the city administrator report, must be Wi-Fi?
Yeah, I put camp, run Wi-Fi in, in that report, just to talk a little bit about the system that we have down there, the, uh, how, how people are not generally real happy with the system that we have down there and any possible improvements that we could do. And I'd like to, the council to at least really be aware of another opportunity that we can do to work through Cornville. Okay, so our internet system down there now, we offer a free service to the campers. It's a wire, wireless internet and, but it's password protected. So they would, when they check in, they would get the password from the office staff. And then it is that you just ring up the wireless on your phone, put in the password, and, and you should be able to connect to this system, okay? We have lots of problems with even people being able to connect. It, it's just, you know, just problematic. When we started this, and it's been three or four years ago, I think we started and had a couple of nodes within, within the campground and that was problematic, and then a couple of years ago, we added a couple more nodes or repeaters to expand the area. Uh, and that still is, is problematic. What do you, what do you get for comments from the campers?
A lot of them can't get on it because I think it's overloaded to start with when everybody tries to get on it. But other than that, they, they appreciate it, I think.
Well, one person said they were down there on Monday and couldn't get on.
Really?
Yeah.
We camped, well, we were with campers. I don't know if the trees are in the way, but it wasn't the weekend.
Something about the way it goes through the routers or something and that every router it goes through, it lowers it? Is that?
That's true. That's, yeah, that email from Jeremy there kinda states that too.
That's my, that's my non-technical question.
How many campers use the service, would you say, when they check?
A lot.
A lot? Sixty percent, eighty percent?
I'd say seventy-five percent.
What's the state doing?
You've got to have Wi-Fi now. That's just ridiculous.
Does the state have it?
They're, they're gonna have, they have got Lee's product there that we're gonna hear about in a second. So, the, so the, for the infrastructure that we have down there right now, we purchased an internet subscription then from, from Corn Belt and then it's broadcast out wirelessly to the campground. We did increase the speed or upsize the, the connection to the campground earlier this spring. And we still get concerns about that. It hasn't necessarily addressed all of the problems. On page eighteen, you'd see a proposal, and this one's from Jeremy at Computer Depot, about changing this over to, to a five G system. So you get these, these access points there that are not the repeaters that, that take the strength down a half with each repeat. And believe me, I'm not, I'm not a technical guy, but just that Jeremy, of course, says this would, would be much better, address a lot, a lot more and more problems. You see the price on that, forty-one hundred dollars.
How about?
Pardon me?
Every year or that'll just be our?
This is just a hardware upgrade cost. Then we pay, I don't know, say we pay that hundred dollar fee for an internet subscription each month to Corn Belt.
So then somehow we need to charge the campers for that?
Uh, well, we got to, we're gonna talk about that here, Derry, as, as far as an option.
Yeah.
Because I guess just, you'd be thinking about that, um, that the fact that we've provided a free service to people. Okay, you've provided a free service to people, but the service isn't very good. We have an opportunity that we could choose to work with Corn Belt and have much, what has to end up being a much better system, you know, their name's on the line then about, about that. But they're gonna charge for it. So you wanna maybe explain that just a little bit, Lee, about how it works?
I guess step back a little bit. When you think about it, so we're, you got a fifty meg circuit coming to you. How many camps and spots are there in the campground?
Two hundred.
Okay, take seventy-five percent of that, two hundred, so you got a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy customers using free. When they see free, everybody's on it. Does everybody get the password when they come in? So every camper's got, well, think about it. Your wife's got a, my wife's got a smartphone, I got one, your kid's got a tablet. So you got at least three people on there. I don't know if they have it restricted. Fifty meg is not gonna serve that many customers. On the, on the state, on the state side, we have a hundred meg circuit there, and we're still tweaking that. We're working with that, but it, it, it takes a lot more bandwidth. If you're gonna give a product, and I think I addressed this back when we talked about it first time. If you're gonna do it, do it right, because all it does is give you a bad name. And, and I don't want Corn Belt's name on, if you're gonna provide service. I want it, the city's providing it, not Corn Belt, because if I want it there, I want people to get the service and have the right speeds and be able to do what they want. Not that they should have wide-open speeds, they should probably get five meg a piece and that'd be good. What we've done on the state side is we've put in a product and it's pay-as-you-go. It's a Wi-Fi thing, it's a subscription thing, so when you get on it, you go onto your, your Wi-Fi networks, you, you log in and it gives you an option. If you're a, if you're a Corn Belt customer, you can get a free, you get, you get it free, or a, or not a Corn Belt, uh, uh, Orion, not Net INS. Give them a Net INS email, you can get it free. Otherwise, you can pay by the day, by the weekend, by the week, or by the month. And it's a pay-as-you-go with a credit card, debit card, or whatever you use. On that, we make sure the bandwidth is there to support the customers. If you wanna go, keep going with a free service, that's fine, but, or, that's fine. We can, we can give you a quote on some access points. But when I do that, I wanna make sure we take into account that there's gonna be two hundred customers or figure ninety percent. You wanna make sure that pipe, think of it as a water line. So you got a hundred and twenty people coming into an inch water line. You wanna make sure that water line's big enough, that pipe feeding them is big enough, so that they have a, a good service. If you're gonna do it, do it right. If you're not, don't do it, because all you're doing is you're hurting yourself, because when they complain, what do they say? You know, our internet's crap, you offer a free Wi-Fi and it doesn't work. So if you're gonna do it, make sure it works right and, and do it right.
What do you charge by the day out there?
Uh, I'd have to look again. I didn't get that. I think it's like seven bucks a day.
Is it five?
Huh?
Is it five? My daughter was just out.
Could be five, but five, seven, and it gives you three, three hookups. Three devices get a hookup to that. And it gives you, uh, eight mags up, eight mags down. Enough to sustain three, or five, three devices could do Netflix or something like that streaming service.
So I know this isn't the thing to ask, but how does that product compare with what Jeremy's going to do?
I don't know what he's offering, but I'm gonna tell you what, when I put Corn Belt's name on it, I'm gonna make sure it's the top-of-the-line product.
I understand that.
Just because it's a Cisco, what we have is a Cisco and it's the top-of-the-line over there, one of the top products. Put that router or put that access point in, it's about seven grand for us to put it in. There's other devices, like I say, if you wanna do similar to what you're doing, we have access points. I have a guy, salesman, coming in Wednesday and he can do a, a study on it. Look at the area and measure it and give us an idea of what we would need. I drove through there, I think there's, uh, I think there's an access point on the building, the check-in building. Like two posts, there's access points.
There's supposed to be one on the office and one on the garage, and then I thought three, uh, three other posts.
And, and I just drove through there, I think you might have saw me, when I drove through, my wife picked up this morning, just kinda getting an idea. Each access, and, and when you're talking about cutting the signal in half, when you get a mesh network, is what they call it, which makes it nice, because then people, so if you had a mesh network, you have access points all over and you can take your phone and walk from here all around and you won't lose signal. But in certain mesh networks and depending on the equipment, it cuts, because what they do is they wirelessly connect. So if you got a, one on this post, one on this post, and one on this post, they all connect wirelessly. But when they do that, they lose, uh, uh, bandwidth to connect to each other. So you cut in half, so if you take.
Problem now.
So if you take a fifty meg circuit, you might drop that, you know, not really in half, but you might lose ten, fifteen meg each one. But pretty soon, when you're trying to connect thirty customers on it, onto it, it, it doesn't work. I mean, it's the same way when I get all my kids home. I get six kids come home and they all connect to my Wi-Fi, you know, their, the bandwidth limits is, is, gets tight in a hurry. The way to do it right would be at each one of those access points is to do a direct connect back to a switch or a router at the, the office, so that they each have their own bandwidth, so it doesn't limit it.
You're out to the state now, do you get, is there, what percentage use it?
You know, we just talked to, we talked, I, I tried to get some numbers today, and we've only had it going for two weeks.
As I say, I didn't know it'd be hot in there.
Well, well, everything's been shut down, you know, so this was the first year we fired it up and we, well, going through the DNR, it took me nine months to get okay to put it out there. I just got it did, and, and so we've only had it for two weeks and we're still tweaking it some.
But the customers out there are paying for it?
They pay, unless you're a Net INS email customer.
And those customers that aren't INS, they're, they don't have a problem with paying for it evidently.
Uh, the only reason we put it in, I talked to a company down by Lake Acaria that did it in a campground down there, and, and they said they had very good success. There's six campgrounds around the state that use it off INS. Again, you're paying for it, but, uh, five dollars or twenty dollars for a week, people.
They're used to having it free. So that's what I get yelled at.
Well.
I, I would.
You ain't gonna get yelled at anymore because it works like crap. If it works well and they have to pay for it, they don't care. But if they have to pay for it, you wanna make sure, or you can do the same thing you wanna do. You can put it, but just make sure when you put a product in there, fifty meg is not gonna feed. We got the hotel out here, it has a hundred and fifty meg. How many rooms is that?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two customers. I mean, you gotta make sure that pipe is big enough. If you're gonna offer a free service, make sure, when it's free, everybody wants to use it. So you wanna make sure it's a, it's, it's a quality product.
If you're getting seven bucks a day now, what's, what kind of increments down the road is that price gonna increase?
Ours?
Yeah, will that be next week, eight bucks?
No, if anything, it'll go down. It ain't gonna increase, just because bandwidth goes down. Stay the same or go down. It's been that way, and, and we, and the, and the only reason I'm saying that is, is Orion sets that price or we, we can reset it, but they've been that way for the last five or six years on that price. But with that, um, I just checked, the lead time is like seven weeks, six weeks to get the equipment in. Maybe it's a little better now, but with coronavirus, everything's, electronics is pushed back. But we do have an access point we put down there every year for the, the, uh, concerts on the pier. Tom counted me into it. We put it on the wireless, we put it on the open, uh, shelter house down there. We put a wireless and it feeds the, for the, um, the bands, because they need wireless. There's a huge difference in access points. My only thing is if you're gonna do it, you put it in two years ago, three years ago. Couldn't have been over three years ago, because I've only been here three years and, um, make sure you put in the quality. And I'm, I'm not saying Jeremy's not selling the quality product he is, but make sure. Electronics is good for, we, uh, uh, we, we project five or seven to nine years on electronics to, to serve the purpose. But it's not cheap either, but if you're gonna, especially when you're gonna put free on it. You wanna make sure it's good because they'll, who do they come to? You know, they come to you guys and, and that's the thing, so.
So the system we put in the day, you put it in the next day, it'll be obsolete? Is that the deal, like, anything else?
No. When we put something in, we put it in that it should last for nine years, seven to nine years.
So we couldn't have what we have now and then have the additional, or none?
You wanna put this in, then put the pay one on top of it?
Yeah, can you do that? I'm just asking.
I would be, I, I would not put my pay one in there if you're gonna offer a free one. I mean, why would I double the service, compete against it?
So you, you said you have a vendor coming this week?
Wednesday he's coming, because we're doing a big project on our.
Maybe take a look at that.
Well, he could come in, he could give us a better idea. He could, he can measure, he said, and, and give you an idea of what, uh, what I like to do is take a couple of our, our, uh, access points down there and put them up and just see the coverage we get. Then we can tell pretty close of what we need for equipment.
I think that'd be a good plan, plan.
Oh, yeah, it's the way to do it.
I just, I, I'm not real big on charging them. I think if you're gonna charge people, then you should just raise your rates. I don't, I don't like it when I go somewhere and they say, well, if you do this, but we're gonna charge you extra if you pay cash or whatever. I don't like it. It, it immediately, it immediately turns me off on that business.
My thing is on that, just, just exactly what you're saying. If you're gonna offer a free service, charge an extra quarter or fifty cents a night, but make sure that free service is a good service, because when you offer free, everybody's gonna use it.
But you know, now, I mean, when I travel, I pretty much expect free.
You do, but you're, you're paying for it though.
Well, I know. I figure it's built into my hotel.
Exactly, yep. But if your, if your Wi-Fi doesn't work in a hotel, what do you do? You call the front desk and tell them, or I do.
I do.
Because I take my laptop wherever I go. We went to Florida for two weeks and my laptop's with me and you, you make sure you, you want that, if it's gonna be there, you're gonna wanna use it.
How long have we had this with Jeremy Scott? Do you remember?
See, I would've said three or four years, but maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe than that.
Oh, I've only been here, be four years in December. And then it goes a year after I started, but I might be wrong.
What we have now is Corn Belt, right?
You have our, we, we supply the pipe out and Jeremy supplies the, the, the access points.
I see, okay.
And when we first started, I think we had twenty-five meg maybe, or we up to fifty? Or we up to twenty-five?
I just do know that we upsize that, just this spring, so.
You know, that's a, that's a huge, that's a thing you gotta figure into.
So we don't know what we have for sure right now?
I'm thinking it's fifty meg. I'm thinking it's fifty meg.
Well, let's get some more information from the.
I can give you a, a, kind of a, on both options.
Your sales won't be here and you can do that for us?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at it.
Okay.
But I can give you the option on the, on the, the Wi-Fi and stuff that we have all on the state side.
Sounds like a plan.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You wanna talk about COVID nineteen one more time on?
Yes, just, there're just a couple, just a couple things here anymore. Uh, so city-related, you think about things that are still impacted as far as closures. First one is, is splash pad. Splash pad, according to the governor, is, is, is governed under the same regulations as the swimming pool. The, um, so you may not open that swimming pool or splash pad until June seventeenth.
Do we have the appeal process? I think it's.
Well, Sue said it's completely closed. On the news, they, they're all closed.
I'd like to know how a splash pad is more dangerous than a playground.
Sure.
I would like to know.
It doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
It does not make any sense whatsoever. And I'm thinking they don't know what splash pads are, maybe?
Scott's going on vacation, it could accidentally open up.
John, John's willing to go to jail for the.
I say, I just don't think you wanna be the coaster trouts for what this looks like on the news.
Yeah, really.
Pretty sure we don't.
And don't read, read the shirts. We don't sink.
We don't sink.
We don't sink.
Used to sink.
Um, so parks, all of the playgrounds did open today, um, and same thing with shelter house. So the mass gathering requirements are now that you can, you can gather at fifty percent of the capacity of the, of the facility. So like with the Centennial Shelter House, we always tell people it's fifty people on each side, a hundred people total. So the gathering would be about fifty people. And the Petersons are hosting our rehearsal dinner for Bobby's wedding there on Friday night, so we'll check out the fifty point.
Make sure you adhere to the rules.
Yep. Um, camping, you, you get any comments on that on camp, on, from the campers, Ruth, about any concerns?
Just that the playgrounds weren't open. I mean, oh, no, not really. The, the majority of them were happy that we were open. And it shows, because they're all coming out of the woodwork.
Camper sales are up, they say.
Yeah, I heard that too.
They're spending their check on that.
Uh, City Hall did, we returned to full access today. All of the doors are open. Um, and then this mass gathering thing, about, about fifty percent of normal capacity. Okay, so my question is about city council meetings. We can return to hosting regular city council meetings and we have people, um, attend in person. So the question is, do you wanna do anything to continue with Zoom or would we just revert back to normal operations?
I think it's nice that people go to attend by Zoom if they'd like to. Why not, why would we not do that?
Doesn't cost anything. That's it?
Fourteen bucks a month. But, yeah, no, so.
Yeah, giving people the option.
Yep.
If someone doesn't wanna be here.
There's still people that don't wanna be. There's still, there's still a lot of people that don't wanna go without masks and stuff.
Right, right.
Well, we will continue, uh, continue with Zoom, at least for the moment.
Just so that they know that they can attend if they want to.
Yeah, I mean, it may not, you look at the top part of the Zoom, of the agenda and this big notice about Zoom and stuff. It may not look the same, because we're not giving notice that we, that that's the only way people can participate. It'll probably just be a little link on the bottom that says you can participate by Zoom that way. And then the, then. And then the, then mass gathering stuff again, but about our special, special events as a community. Next big event would, would potentially be the Fourth of July concert. And no formal decision's been made on that, but I think they're plugging away so that we could, could hold the Fourth of July concert. Any new input on that, John?
We're gonna plan on doing Zoom too.
Do it.
So anyway, that's, there is a, a community club meeting next Monday, and I'm sure that will be a, an item of discussion. But as of now, it looks like we'll keep progressing towards trying to do that in, in a way that is, you know, encourages that social distancing stuff to do. And then Water Carnival was, was the other big thing that's come up here recently. A couple of things that do directly impact the city, that the men's club will still plan to, to have a beer garden. Any new comments on beer garden, Jenny?
We're gonna have a meeting tomorrow night and discuss it, I guess, but I don't know. And we still want to have it. Just have to try to figure out how to-
One of the things I was wondering about is, you know, we have, I haven't gone to the Water Carnival meetings, but I kind of keep up with it. We have enough money this year to provide the fireworks and that kind of thing, right? But if we do it this year, because we won't have any stands, we'll have the men's club 20% coming in, but that's probably about it for income. We won't have the rides, we won't have any of those things. Um, and you know, a few years ago, when Carnival was in trouble, we kind of put the word out that, you know, Carnival needed help, and we put some donation things around, and the alumni really came through, I think. I was wondering if you might discuss that, if, you know, if, if the men's club would be willing to take some donations down there too, or if that's gonna complicate your-
You can bring that up.
Yeah, stand too much.
Try to figure out, yeah, look in the future and see.
Yeah, and I, I just think maybe the resort, you know, might put something out once we know for sure what we're having. But I think people will support it. I think, I know, the Carnival committee is worried about money for next year, but I think that people will.
You know, they come out with mall games today, they said, for the school. Well, they won't be, nobody will be at the gate collecting money. They'll just have a bucket there that you pay. Have $5 ready, just drop $5 in the bucket. Because they don't want to handle the money to get the change back. That's the big thing, is that money, yeah.
I think people will be very supportive of everything.
Uh, boy, yeah, you know, I'm optimistic about that too, but. The other change that would, would affect the city, and we need permission from, from the city on, is deals with street parade. They do it, they do intend to have street parade, and what they would do is lengthen the route substantially, and encourage folks then to, to not gather all in the same place, you know, they'd have a much longer route, and encourage that social distancing. So you'll have a formal request then, really on the beer garden and the, and the route, because one of the things about the beer garden would, that it's most likely much bigger, physically much bigger, just for spacing.
So the water floats have been canceled?
Yeah, so you think about things, these things have been canceled. No Midway, no Bill Riley talent show, and the parade of water floats has been canceled. And that's what Vicki was talking about, about, uh, money concerns. You know, and that's really why the parade was canceled, is because of, of money concerns. Costs, we pay the designers for that. So this wouldn't just be a Friday night, and then an all-day Saturday event. Nothing, nothing on Sunday unless it's a church service.
So they're gonna be like, well, the pride decide whether they'll be throwing candy or anything or not?
Yeah, as of now, it looked like they were not going to permit that. They'd have a rule against it, I guess, we'll see how they can enforce that.
We can line up to it to go.
They'll throw candy anyway, that's how that'll work.
Not much, you want to be liable for it.
Yeah, that's right.
We're just worried about water for the men's club, they don't like it.
No, that's right.
Make sure the guys get tested before they get in the water.
That'll work. Is that from the city manager?
No, I do have a few other things. Jimmy Garl stopped by today talking about the fire department, and had a couple of, of projects yet that they were working on. And the first one is to continue to get those air packs. We talked about one, to continue to purchase air packs. And from their budget, yet this, this year, they're able to purchase a couple of them. They had purchased two of them, cost to be $16,478. They would purchase another two with their donation money. And so that, after they purchased these four, they'd have 10 of the new, updated air packs. The other thing that they talked about was station improvements. You know, they talked about needing to do some roof improvements, and then citing that, that north, that north bay at some point also. Um, they are really now looking at having a contractor do that roofing.
Oh, are they?
They, and it has more to do, I think, with available volunteers on the department to, to lead the project and then, you know, get it done. So they do have a, one proposal about, this would put metal, metal roofing on it. The, the metal barn steel, so to speak. They do have a, a proposal on that. It's something over $20,000 for, for that roofing job. Will look for another cost, get in, get another cost from another contractor, and present it back to the city. It's not budgeted to, for that type of expense, to use a contractor.
The budget was what, $5,000?
We, we had had about $8,000, I think, in, in station maintenance stuff. And that's about what it would cost to buy the, buy the materials. But if they do want to get another price, we'll, we'll talk about it more. And it's one of those things, if we need to do the project, we can certainly make it happen. Jimmy was very concerned about the, about the condition of, of the station, and there's several leaks, several roof leaks in there.
And the roof, you know, the roof pillars are developed in others, so rafters, you know, you don't keep the roof fixed, you're serious trouble.
Yep. Our next thing that we, we would look at, next budgeted item to purchase, how about a golf cart for the campground?
Yes. We're ready for shopping. We follow one, it's a, well, Nancy and I went out to Speeds the other day. It's a 2008, which the one we have is a 1999, and we've had it forever. But this is a 2008 for $3,000, and it's a, a club car, just like we have. And another $575, we can get the lights and taillights and everything about it. So $35.75.
I just had lights and taillights put on mine for $140.
Is that with the trade-in?
I, he was supposed to call me back, and he didn't call me back. I don't know if he'll take this, this one as a trade-in or what. We didn't get to that point yet.
Out to Stewart's.
Seems kind of high for a 2008.
Yeah, that, well, yeah, out to Stewart's, I had mine put on this week, $140. But you should be able to buy the cart anyway for $3,000 and have them, have somebody else put the light. You don't need them, you can run a year or two without lights, we did.
No. You want me to, you want to really? Get some liability for this?
There ain't no cops in town anyway. We ain't got no cops.
You can weed out about 10 people if you walk and drove without lights.
We need to know if she's coming.
There's no siren on it at all.
What?
There's no siren on it?
Yeah, can he put that on too?
Sure.
Siren and lights?
I'm sure he can. Not for, not for $140. I think they done a good job. I mean, it's very professional, turn lights, horn, hold that.
Yeah, we did a good job, I agree with that. So find out about the trade, and, I mean, we got that budget.
And it's a budgeted expense, we just go ahead and proceed.
See, the budget was $5,000, so just keep that in mind.
Oh, I already forgot. I already forgot.
I didn't.
Save that money, the fire department needs it for the roof.
I'm sure.
And, and we'll see if Stu could do the lights and stuff.
Yeah, that's fine.
He does a good job, I mean, no doubt about it.
How about some good news today? Tommy Rose passed his mosquito spraying exam, so we do have a certified mosquito sprayer. We'll, we'll be ready whenever them mosquitoes are ready to go. So, Austin's gonna try again, here in a couple days, so. Yep. Lagoon update. Bill got that call from, from Jason while I was with them today about that they had, had backfilled that trench, and they had televised everything. They said the tele, the televised looks really good. They said we wanted to see the video before we would have them switch over. So I guess they're ready to switch over anytime, but they're gonna get us that video tomorrow morning. And assuming that it is good and ready to go, they'd switch over and make that connection. Then it was basically the rest of the week, they'd be working out there at TCT to finish those connections there, and at least all the connections would be made. Fill the, fill the lagoon, and then they'd start working on the air system in it.
When do we do a walkthrough?
When, when it's a little ways away from walk, it's gonna be close to operation.
Oh, backing up a minute, how do you decide about the mosquitoes? Do you get info on that?
Pardon me?
How did we ever decide when we sprayed for mosquitoes? What kind of info you get?
We're relying on a certified operators, and they're, and they're knowledgeable.
Oh, they learned that at school?
They do learn it at school, yeah. Yep.
Otherwise, they go what Bill tells them.
That's a good plan.
Whenever you can walk the dog without getting bit, it's time to spray it.
That's, I, I know we, the, the technical side of things would say that you don't spray nearly as often as, as what you guys would think that you want to. Um, and one of the big guidelines that, that Jeremy Barron's always preached was that you spray, you waited seven days after a, a heavy rain, and, and then if it didn't rain during that time, then you could spray.
Well, last year, once we got on it, I don't think there was a problem. It was bad early, before we got kind of-
We're, we'll be ready, and we have the materials and everything, we can, we'll be ready to help. Kind of think about how this might work into your calendar. The League of Iowa's annual conference is September 16th through 18th. And the league was putting out a request here for, for folks' opinion about, about status of that. You know, I did respond that, that we would certainly send some people. Anyway, if you think that you might be interested, I can, I can get you, get you registered, and we do want to register early for, as far as getting hotel accommodations. It's over in Coralville, September 16th through the 18th. And I'm gonna take a few vacation days, Bobby's getting married this weekend, so Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'll be on vacation.
That's it?
That is it.
We need a motion to go into closed session?
It's a loop.
Second? We'll call.
All right, Goldman, Reese, Mueller.
Yeah, good man.
Thank you. Tom.